coming back. Okay, it's seven o'clock, Jane. All right. Good evening. I'm Julann Boyer, a member of the San Joaquin County League of Women Voters and your moderator for this evening. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, please meet our cosponsors for this evening. Nancy Melor, who is representing Lodi AAUW. Nancy, would you give us a wave? And Steve Mann, who is representing the Lodi New Sentinel. Steve? He's waving his hand. We want to welcome you to this evening's Candidates Forum. Your host, the League of Women Voters, is a nonpartisan political organization. We neither support nor oppose any political party or candidate at any level of government. Membership in the League is open to all men and women who would like to become activists, informed, politically effective members of their community. Please check our website, my.lwv.org/San Joaquin County for further information. Also, our Facebook page, LWV San Joaquin County, or our YouTube account, LWV San Joaquin County, for any further updates and postings of this event. We organize forums like this one to promote the informed and active participation of citizens in government. A few rules for this Zoom online forum. Everyone but the speakers will be muted. Questions have been collected from a variety of sources and will be asked of each candidate. The chat function is disabled. You are able to use Speaker View to better see each candidate. A recording is being made for posting to our YouTube channel. The focus for this forums, this evening's forum, will be the candidates for Lodi City Council District 5. This is the first election cycle for District 5 rather than citywide elections. And I'm going to share with you a screen that has the map of the districts. This can be found on the city clerk's website. And as you can see, District 5 is this whole green area. So rather a large, mostly a lot of industrial area, a lot of commercial area. In the shared screen, you see the districts outlined. The candidates will appear in the order in which they will appear on your ballot. There are three candidates for District 5 seat. Our format this evening will be a modified debate format. Each candidate will be allotted two minutes for an opening statement. After the opening statements, we will move to a period of questions gathered from a variety of sources and reviewed by the League. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question. The order of answering will be rotated based upon the opening order. At the end of the question period, each candidate will have two minutes to give a closing statement. The order of speaking will be in the reverse order of the opening statement. In the interest of fairness and the equal allocation of time, all answers will be timed and time limits will be enforced. Our timer is Julia Tyack. Julia? She will be giving a 30-second warning and then a signal to stop when time has expired. We ask each candidate to please adhere to these time limits. So our first speaker this evening will be Mikey Hothi. Mikey, your two-minute opening statement.
Good evening. My name is Mikey Hothi, running for the open District 5 seat here. I'm born and raised in Lodi, a proud product of Tokay High School, Go Tigers. And after returning from college, I got a job here locally and got involved in the community. I currently sit on the Fire Foundation Board of Directors where we raise money for our men and women in uniform. I also sit on the city's Measure L Sales Tax Oversight Commission where we ensure that your tax dollars are being appropriately spent. And I also work for our Assembly Member, Jim Cooper. And it's through that role that I've managed to help and deliver some resources for our city, namely a million dollars for Lodi Lake to deal with the erosion issue that we had a few years ago, and also half a million dollars for cybersecurity funding as after our city was hit with a ransomware attack. Also have secured $7 million in the state budget to combat internet crimes against children. And I believe it's for these three reasons that I have a number of endorsements from organizations and community leaders throughout town. I'm proud to be endorsed by the Lodi Professional Firefighters, the Lodi Police Officers Association, the Lodi Chamber of Commerce, and countless others. My goal as a council member would be to focus on economic recovery post-pandemic, addressing the city's growing homelessness issue, recruiting and retaining jobs for our residents, and creating more amenities and green space throughout town. So I'm happy to go into more detail as we answer these questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McKnight, you're next up for your two-minute opening statement.
My name is Mike McKnight. I've been in Lodi since 1974, and I am a proud product of Lodi High School, so across town rivals here. In any case, I have worn a lot of hats over the years, from small businessman to radio DJ to firefighter for 15 years. Right now, I wear just the hat of small businessman. I actually have a business here in District 5 as well as living in District 5. I thought about running for council a couple of times in the past. Once I passed because my father was terminally ill, and another time I passed because I was in the middle of an expansion on my business. Now I figured was the time because we've got a lot of things that are going to require some strong leadership. Of course, COVID response for small business is a major problem at the moment and is going to continue to be a problem for some time, not to mention the fact that we need some economic development in Lodi, which has been absent for some time. And that's where a lot of my strength lies. For the past 23 years, I've worked with various cities in San Joaquin County as well as other NGOs to help attract business to a particular jurisdiction or county. Right now, I'm actually working on a project with the San Joaquin Partnership and the city of Lathrop to do exactly that. So that is one of the main goals, to bring some jobs to Lodi, help businesses here that want to expand, expand, and attract even more business to the city of Lodi. And for that reason, and a number of others that I'll expand on later, is why I'm running for Lodi City Council District 5.
Thank you. And last is Mr. Madrigal.
Thank you. My name is Hector Madrigal, or Hector Madrigal. I'm running to represent District 5 in Lodi City Council. So I've been a citizen of Lodi since 1996, and over the past 24 years, I've only resided in what's now outlined as District 5. You guys were talking about your high schools. I started over in Tokay, but then I went over to Liberty for continuation schools for medical reasons. But I'm running for city council now because I'm looking to bring our community together. And I hope you'll vote for me this November as I have a track record of serving the community. I've helped lead my area's National Night Out gatherings alongside my family and neighbors. Almost two years ago, I created my own news and politics media channel called The Olive Branch to inform citizens and create nonbiased discussions, though I've discussed political and American issues online for the past decade or so. Not long ago, I would get students civically engaged and registered to vote as part of the San Joaquin Delta Politics, San Joaquin Delta College Politics Law and Society Club. But more recently, I created an online Lodi News and Politics group where everyone could come together and openly discuss all political issues without any sort of censorship. So now it's time for us to work together as we head down the road to recovery and reform. And my goal is to help relieve the undue burden that this pandemic has caused and to empower the citizens of Lodi as we make our way through this tumultuous period in our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for your two-minute opening statement. We will now move to the questions and answers. So the first question, we will start with Mr. Hothi, move to Mr. McKnight, and then Mr. Madrigal. And the second question, we will reverse, not reverse it, but we'll start with Mr. McKnight, et cetera, et cetera. So the first question is, what problems can you see associated with flight from the Bay Area to Lodi for people seeking more affordable housing? How should city government address those problems? And we start with you, Mr. Hothi.
Thank you for the question. As somebody who's currently in the market for a house right now, I can tell you that I've been dealing firsthand with fight from the Bay Area due to the pandemic and the increase in housing. I think that, you know, Lodi has a 2% cap on development, and we also have just the natural barriers of the green space to the south. We've got the river, river to the north, and it looks like it's primarily west expansion. I think we need to be smart about our growth and ensure that it fits with our landscapes and our scenery and that we're not taking some of the most fertile land that we have for our city, but also there is a lot of infill development that I think we can focus on to create some more affordable housing. We have to focus on supply. I've had many conversations with the Lodi Association of Realtors and the Building Industry Association about what they'd like to do to try to address the affordability issue, but I think we, as a council, just have to create an environment where you're being supportive of smart development and infill.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McKnight?
Well, the mass exodus from the Bay Area is actually creating part of our problem because a lot of the people that are coming from the Bay Area at the moment are actually coming here and buying houses for cash well above the asking price. So it's creating a major demand problem for us here in Lodi. So whether it's affordable or not is not the issue. We just have too many people coming from the Bay Area. Now, that being said, there's also a unique opportunity for us, too, to be able to capitalize on a lot of businesses that are leaving the Bay Area as well. A lot of my folks that I talk to in real estate are telling me that a lot of tech and biotech businesses are leaving San Francisco en masse, and they're looking for someplace cheaper to do business. Unfortunately, the one problem that Lodi has right now is that we're maxed out on commercial and light industrial space. I would like to see our next annexation, instead of being residential, actually be commercial property to attract some of these businesses. Therefore, having some of these people that are coming here will actually be working here as well, not to mention the fact that we could increase our employment here in Lodi and increase the median household income, which at present is only $54,600. That's not going to be able to buy some of the houses or most of the houses that are being built right now. So it's kind of a twofold question, but instead of it being more of a problem, I see it as a benefit that we can manipulate to our advantage if we do it right.
Thank you. Mr. Madrigal?
Yes, while the mass exodus from the Bay Area, it's just part of California going altogether, and that's put a strain on our housing crisis. California in general has a housing crisis, and I know Lodi doesn't really want to grow, but we still need to grow just as another city, as another part of California. So my thoughts from the city council perspective is trying to work with other cities to make sure that our cities have the planning, the growth planning in place. And I also agree with Mr. McKnight. We have this opportunity to actually bring the jobs here instead of just everybody coming from the Bay Area. You know, District 5 has the huge industrial and commercial areas, so we could provide more infrastructure, more jobs to keep people here and to grow here instead of having everybody come here just as a home while their jobs are over in the Bay Area.
Okay, thank you. And question number two, we'll start with Mr. McKnight. Where and how should Lodi grow?
Well, at the moment, it seems like a lot of our growth is either happening to the west or the south. Where I'm at in District 5, there's another planned development by Bennett Homes that's going to be just to the south of me. At this point in time, we actually have some room to grow to the east if we work that out. I mean, we did have some land there that was available for a San Joaquin Delta College Annex, but that never happened. That land is still there and still available. We do have two other pieces of property that are, they're available but not really available, but they probably will be in the next, in the next, in the next, you know, probably couple of years. But there is a number of properties to the east that actually could be used to expand our light industrial and commercial area. That's where I'd like to see us go. I don't want to see us go too much farther to the west. However, with the way things are going with vineyards and a lot of agricultural entities, you know, pulling up vineyards, I think we're going to end up going west for some time.
Thank you. Mr. Madrigal, the same question?
Yeah, so Lodi has a 20-year general plan for construction. They already set it about 10 years ago, so we're at the halfway point. They currently have plans to extend west, you know, past Reynolds, or not Reynolds Ranch, the Sun West Village, past two more road. They want to go south to even out Reynolds Ranch because right now we have Harney and then Reynolds Ranch is just this area to the south. So they, Lodi has plans to pretty much even out Lodi along Reynolds Ranch. I still believe we need to keep that green belt in place between Lodi and Stockton, but I can, I'm still for this plan. While it's already in place, there's nothing we can really do about it, going for the west, going further south. And there's also some plans to extend the commercial and industrial development a little bit east past Beckman. But Lodi has stayed, as we mentioned earlier, Lodi has kept behind that 2% growth rate, the annual growth rate. So just as long as we keep below the annual growth rate and stick to the plan, I think that should be fine.
Okay, and Mr. Hothi, the same question?
Well, the council at the last meeting just approved 150 home development over by Reynolds Ranch. I think we're going to see a lot more development east and west, but also I'd like to see some more jobs come into town. I'm working with the Lodi Chamber of Commerce on a Grow in Lodi virtual business tour coming up in two weeks. We're basically, or three weeks, we're basically inviting site selectors and tech companies and folks out from the Sacramento region, the Bay Area, and to try to show them the amenities that Lodi has to offer as well as potential sites for development, just trying to attract good-paying jobs for our residents. I also work for Assembly Member Jim Cooper, as I mentioned earlier. And I think, so we have the state that's constantly expanding throughout Sacramento County. Wouldn't it be nice to attract some of those jobs here in Lodi? We have the General Mills facility, which is still underutilized. We've got tons of vacant lots over in the industrial area. I think that we have to be smart and more proactive about how to grow Lodi and engage potential investors. I hear a lot from the Reynolds Ranch community about having a white cloth restaurant over in the coastal area so that they can walk to and from. Wouldn't it be nice to have Rosewood, which unfortunately just closed down downtown? Wouldn't it be nice to attract some restaurants like that in District 5? That's what I want to do.
Okay, thank you. The next question will be asked by AAUW, and we begin with Mr. Madrigal. Nancy?
This is a three-part question. I'll read all three parts. Is the Lodi Public Library adequately funded? Why or why not? If not, how would you adequately fund it?
We start with Mr. Madrigal.
Thank you. So the Lodi Public Library, I wouldn't say it is adequately funded, especially since it's not, well, pre-COVID, it wasn't always open, you know. There is some furlough sort of things, just like with most city services. So just to make sure that it's always open and has the proper services for all of our citizens, I think Lodi would need to fund the library a little bit more, but not just to keep it how it is. We need to go further. We need to plan for our future. And so I would like to see some additional services, like some after-school programs. And to, while we would need additional funding for that, I say that we can just look for more grants from the state if possible. But it's really tough for, to ask to like raise taxes or anything at this time because we are just at a terrible economic state throughout the entire country, which is due to the global pandemic. So I just can't really ask to raise taxes. I understand it's usually best to help fund our services, but this time I would just be looking for some sort of grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you. And then Mr. Hothi?
I think we should look at expanding Lodi Library hours and days of operation. I sit on the Measure L Sales Tax Oversight Commission, and we've actually seen an influx higher than expected of sales tax revenue. I'd like to see some of those resources utilized to strengthen our library system. But I also think we have to be creative about how the library functions, get the library more out in the community a little more. In some cities, some libraries, you'll see that they have mobile trailers where they go to community events and try to promote some of the activities that the library has and try to promote membership. Let's help the library to try and become more self-sustaining, but also let's figure out other grant dollars, county, state, and federal, that could be available to strengthen the library system. Also, I've seen some neighborhood libraries. I know some residents throughout Lodi, they have books available for residents in their neighborhood to pick up. It'd be nice for the city and the library to take the lead to try to get some more library satellites out throughout the city.
Okay, and thank you. That concludes, Mr. McKnight?
I was going to say, wait, there's one more.
There's one more, sorry.
Yeah, I don't know that the Lodi Library has ever been adequately funded. Honestly, I don't know that I've seen too many libraries that are, but there are a number of grants out there that we could access, hopefully, to try to bridge the gap to get it to be, I know the American Honda Foundation has a really good STEM grant. There's also an, I believe it's the AASL list of library grants, there's a number of grants there that could be accessed. There's even a lot of other private corporations or private entities and corporations. I think Best Buy even offers grants for school libraries and public libraries. We just need somebody to take the lead on that, whether we actually, you know, have someone on staff already that could do that, or whether, you know, one of the city council members could make that their project. There's plenty of grants out there to access so that we could fund the library to an optimum level.
Thank you. And the next question, the next question will come from Steve Mann. Steve?
Okay.
And we start with, now I've lost track, Mr. Madrigal?
Okay. Pension obligations continue to strain local budgets. How would you pay for those continuing pension obligations? And please be specific.
Well, pension obligations are just, well, as you mentioned, they're obligations, so we would have to pay for them from the city's general fund outside of what we have. I can't say, I can't say any other ways to my knowledge. Sorry.
It's okay. And Mr. Hothi?
Well, first, I'm happy that the city has a rainy day fund to ensure that our reserves are strong for when our pension obligations come through. But first and foremost, this is a state-created issue that requires a state solution. In 2012, we had PEPRA, the pension reform. I think it's possible within the next couple of legislative sessions that you see another pension reform bill coming through, but first and foremost, we have to ensure that our retirees and people that are close to retirement receive the pension that they were promised. Any sort of changes to the pension, they have to come from later on down the pipeline, people in mine and Mr. Madrigal's age range who are further out from retirement, but, you know, I think we have to make sure that we're protecting our retirees and those who are close to retirement.
Thank you. And Mr. McKnight?
Well, it's, you know, long been a, well, I shouldn't say a widely-kept secret, it's probably the worst-kept secret in history, that pension obligations are very unsustainable, and we're having to pass more bond measures and other things to keep up with them. Obviously, things are rounding down a bit. I mean, I worked with and trained with a lot of the guys that worked for Lodi Fire Department, and I know guys that retired at, you know, very high levels of their pension, and other guys are probably not going to be retiring at such a high level. It's one of these things that, I'm glad that we have the pension stabilization, but unfortunately, for the city of Lodi, that doesn't last forever. I believe that's only about a six-month, maybe a nine-month at best rainy day fund. We're going to have to get smarter about how we do this, and without getting into, or without knowing all of the nuts and bolts of it, I would have to, I would have to say that we're going to have to start rounding down some of the benefits for each hire as we go on, and that's for all public employees.
Thank you. And Steve, can you ask a second question, please?
I sure can. With district voting, you will be elected by about 20% of the electorate. How will you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the community at large?
And we start with Mr. Hothi.
Well, although we recently moved to buy district elections, Lodi is still a small community, and I think that you, of course, have to be accountable to the voters who elected you, but you always have to be thinking big picture about the city as a whole. What I don't want to see happen is what we see, we've seen in other cities where you have districts fighting each other for resources. I have a good relationship with members of the council. I'm proudly endorsed by Mayor Doug Keen, and I think I have the ability to work collaboratively with our members on the council to ensure that, you know, we're addressing the needs of the city as a whole.
Okay, and Mr. McKnight?
Honestly, I don't, I don't think that there's that much separation between what the district wants as to what the city wants. Most of the makeup of the district very much mirrors the rest of the city, so I'm not sure that those are two separate things. There might be one thing here or there that the district might want that is specific to the district, but for the most part, we're not such a big city that there's that much of a separation between the city and the district.
Thank you. And Mr. Madrigal?
Yes. I'd like to kind of agree with both my competitors. The city of Lodi isn't very big. It's only about three by four miles wide, like 12 square miles. But still, I am for this whole district system. I'm going to try and be focusing on my district and the citizens of my district, so I want to try and communicate with them as much as possible, keep them informed to what's going on in the city, and then bring that, or their thoughts, to the table of the city council so we can have a discussion, a citywide discussion. I'm just bringing their thoughts to the table for all of us to really reflect on.
Okay, thank you. And the last question for this evening. How would you successfully solve the homelessness issue in Lodi? And we start with Mr. McKnight.
Well, the homelessness issue, it didn't get here overnight, and it's not going to be solved overnight either. The Tiny Homes Project that was recently proposed for Chapman Field, I was not in favor of for a number of reasons. One, it's just, it's flat not a big enough response. And the tiny homes projects that have been done so far, I've not seen one that's been terribly successful. Even the city of Seattle, which has probably the largest homeless population on the West Coast, even struggles with their tiny home population. But here's the problem. These tiny home projects are supposed to be a bridge between homelessness and affordable housing. Well, unfortunately, there's not enough affordable housing out there for this to be a bridge, too. So we really have two problems to solve, not just one. But in the meantime, we've got to be, we've got to be working within the law as much as we possibly can because we've got homeless populations, not only here, but I've worked on several issues in Stockton where it's impacting the rest of the population as well with regards to waste being tossed in the water and everything else. So that has to be fairly aggressive, and it has to be, it has to be at a point where people understand that, hey, this is important, we do want to do something for these people, but they cannot create a public health hazard for the rest of the population.
Okay, Mr. Madrigal?
So the homelessness issue is very deep, so it's not just one type of person or another. It's not just people who are addicted to drugs and alcohol, it's not just lazy people. You know, it requires the housing assistance, rental assistance. It does require some mental health assistance, employment assistance, life training, substance abuse. So to help with the homelessness issue, I think we need to just support our current services or wraparound services like the Salvation Army and Grace and Mercy Charitable Foundation. I also support the Tiny Homes Project because our Committee on Homelessness has looked into this extensively. I've looked into it quite a bit as well, because when we go, come from a housing-first approach, we give them some housing to these qualified individuals, and then they can work on their other sorts of issues, whether it's substance abuse or possibly relationships issues and getting a job, you know, a foothold in our current society. And when it comes to the Tiny Homes Project, it is already, well, it has it has quite a bit of funding, about $1.25 million from a HEAT grant funding, we current Committee on Homelessness is even looking at more grant funding, like $2.5 million from the Homeless Housing Assistance Prevention Program. So there is quite a bit of money out there already for these homelessness issues. Tiny Homes Project, as I was mentioning, it was meant to be on a pub public land. That's why they originally thought about Tom Chapman Field. I can now see citizens of Lodi aren't aren't for that area. But it was they weren't for that area because they were misinformed. There's transparency transparency was just lacking, and they were thinking the entire homeless camp was going to be at that at this Tiny Homes Project. So we just need to get keep the Tiny Homes Project near these wraparound services, and I would also like to have some sort of day center that would allow these individuals to get the help that they need, whether it's employment help, mental health services, getting daily medication, getting lockers to help or to hold their items while they're at work. Because some of these homeless individuals actually have jobs, they just can't afford a house. So they might be living out of their car. They might be living with somebody somebody else, just a family member, and that's sort of what they call hidden homelessness. But as long as we keep some of these services up, it'll actually reduce the cost to taxpayers. We give them tiny homes. We don't have to clean up after them or clean up off the streets. So we actually save money that way, you know, preventative care. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Hothi?
Well, the governor has actually committed $1 billion statewide to addressing this issue. So I think we as a city need to pursue some of those funds. We also need to provide support for members of the homeless community who want it. We have to work with the county and the state to provide wraparound services, but we also have to provide law enforcement with the tools to deal with the issue for those who are breaking the law. I support AB 1958 authored by Assembly Member Cooper, which disallows encampments on levees and bypasses. I'm sure everyone's heard of some encampments where they're digging into the levees and potentially creating a hazard for the rest of us, you know, it's a public health hazard. I also helped to secure $2 million from Caltrans to build fencing at three of their sites throughout the city of Lodi that have become problematic. We've seen some, you know, the encampments there. So fencing has already gone up at one of those locations. It's not a be-all, end-all solution. And I was talking to Mark Armstrong with Take Back Lodi earlier today and just talking about how members of the community have still gotten beyond the fence and are trying to cut into it. But I think we have to really engage with folks at all levels of government to address this issue. And of course, we have the issue of bed space. There was the an appellate court decision, the Boise decision, which basically says that you don't have the bed space available, and the city law enforcement can't remove these folks from public lands. So we have to address the bed space issue. I'm open to suggestions from members of the public. I think we have to have significant input from the public on the site selection process. We right now, people can't go to City Hall and have their voices heard, so it feels like things are kind of being done beyond behind scenes at the council to try to determine a location for the transitional housing and a potential emergency shelter. So whatever the location is, I think that you have to have significant input from the public. That being said, I think we ought to put the these this housing where the community currently resides. So I'm open to suggestions on that, but those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We've come to the end of our question and answer period. So now we have closing statements from each of the candidates. You'll each be allowed two minutes for a closing statement, and we will begin with Mr. Madrigal.
Thank you. So we're coming to the end of a crazy year, and now we're looking for you to decide who will lead Lodi going forward. But we must all remain resilient in our struggle towards a society built on truth and justice. But this will require some sacrifice in the years to come because of what the pandemic and inequality has produced in our society. But we must remain positive, and as a community, we can come together to provide respect and equity to all of our people. My plan is to empower the people of Lodi by enabling them to vote in the mayor to a four-year term and to enact term limits so more diverse leadership and the next generation have the opportunity to step up. I want to help rebuild the east side using asset-based community development alongside the Lodi Chamber of Commerce, and I'm looking to reform the criminal justice system because we as a society put too much on the backs of our police, and they're not properly equipped to handle many of these situations. So we need to update our system by allowing nurses, social workers, and counselors to take calls for domestic fights, issues related to our children at school, substance abuse, mental health, and calls for homelessness. So our officers can focus on the serious criminal activity that requires law enforcement. And speaking of homelessness, it's past time we address the issue of a rising homeless population, but we need to work smarter instead of harder. And from my research, the US has found success by tackling the issue from a housing-first approach, and the Committee on Homelessness here in town has created plans for tiny homes and have located funds from the state specifically designated for homelessness causes. But we cannot do this alone because it takes a community to help our brothers and sisters. So this November 3rd, I hope you will vote for Hector Madrigal for Lodi City Council in District Five. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. McKnight?
As I mentioned previously, I've been here since 1974, and I've seen a lot of ups and a lot of downs in the city of Lodi. And I don't think that we're necessarily up or down, but we do have a pretty uphill fight in front of us with regards to the homelessness, with regards to COVID response, with regards to the economy and such. And it's it just kind of seems to me that we've had a lot of extraneous things that have kind of stood in the way of actually making the right decisions in some respects. And that's where I kind of want to try to get us back on the right track with regards to decision-making. One of those, for example, is with regards to hiring of our police and firefighters. We have spent so much money in overtime to staff an engine that should be staffed because we've hired at too great an interval, so people are retiring faster than you're hiring them. You know, with my 15 years of the fire department, that was always a major problem, not as much of a problem as I've seen with the city of Lodi for the last 10 years. So and I'd also like to try and figure out a way to be able to retain some of our police officers. We seem to have an enormous amount of turnover with our police department. You can't build continuity and public trust when you're constantly losing officers. Combined with the that combined with the homeless issue, because I consider the public safety and the homeless issues intertwined, those are the two things that I put force in the forefront of what I would like to tackle as a term of city councilman. And I hope coming November 3rd that you cast your vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hothi?
This last 40 minutes kind of just flew by, and there are some issues that I still want to talk about, namely providing support for our business community and individuals that are struggling during this pandemic. I think that we have as a city have to be aggressive in providing folks with PPE so that they have the resources to continue operating during this pandemic. I also would like to allow businesses, especially those downtown, to operate outside in the streets, similar to what you see during the farmers' markets, you know. We need to create the space for these folks because a lot of people, a lot of businesses aren't going to survive this pandemic. And so we as a city have to do our best to ensure that that they do. I think there are, you know, we've had a bungled COVID response at all levels of government. You see so much inconsistency across the board, and I think we as a city need to provide clarity to our businesses and those that are trying their best to adhere to these ordinances. We also need to provide more for public safety in our parks. I mentioned the million dollars that I secured through the state for for Lodi Lake. I think there are opportunities to leverage state dollars to bring resources back to our to our community. I'm proud to have endorsements from pretty much every single group that has interviewed the candidates. I have the support of the Lodi firefighters, as I mentioned, the Lodi Police Officers Association, the Deputy Sheriffs Association, the Lodi Chamber of Commerce, which thoroughly vetted all of these candidates. So I hope that the public sees the people that are paying closest attention to to what's happening here at the city and who knows these issues, and I hope that you'll support me in this election. If you'd like to see more about who I am and what I stand for, you can visit my website, mikeyhothi.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidates, thank you for your participation in this evening's forum and your willingness to run for this important office. Everyone, be sure to go to Vote Tuesday, November 3rd. We encourage you to check on the League's voter education website, votersedge.org, for more in-depth information about the candidates and the ballot measures. You can also obtain the address of your polling place at this website as well as on the back cover of your voter booklet. Thank you to all of you for all of the cosponsors for joining us this evening in in sponsoring this first of the many, we hope in the future, League of Women Voters Candidates Forums. Remember to vote. Thank you and good evening.